I'm sorry if everyone can stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Could we have a roll call of members, please? Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Bream.
Here.
Mr. Francis. Mr. Hoff.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
Mrs. Irwin Adams. Mr. Johnston. Mr. Cruz. Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Thank you. We did have an executive session this evening for purposes of real estate and personnel. And now we will have hearing from citizens. Anyone wishing to address the board, please stand up to the microphone. And we would ask that you would take no more than five minutes because we have to get on to our voting meeting. And please state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Luigi Vilani. I am a custodian here at the high school. I came to speak to you today for, basically to ask you a question. If I could. We were at a asbestos asbestos meeting the other day. And it was brought to our attention that there's going to possibly be a shortage of help in the maintenance areas in the future. And there's a lot of older people like myself are going to be retiring in the next few years. So I have a question for the whole board, and it starts out like this. Why not us? When the old school was being, getting ready to tour down, be torn down. And the question was brought before everybody, why do we need a new school? That old school's fine. We were among the first people to defend all of their decision. We would say, hey, you've got to be in the school. I can tell you personally, in the floor I worked in, when it rained, we had to get big garbage cans. I had a room full of garbage cans to catch water. And we were constantly going to anyone who had listened to us saying, hey, we need a new school. We had your back. When the school was being moved out of, and you needed our help to go above and beyond moving things and packing things for you, making things sure we're organized. And we were moving things from Stevens. We were moving things from Kimmel. And we're helping you. Long, hot days. We had your back. When COVID hit, the schools needed disinfected. We were working among construction workers who we later found out had COVID. We were sending the letter saying that we were essential employees. I got COVID. My wife caught COVID from me. I came back weak, but I came. We had your back. During all this, we were asked to take a pay freeze against my better judgment. But we believed in you. We had your back. We were told we would be taken care of later. Others were told the same. We had your back. Well, later came, and the teachers and others received their back pay, and their pays were unfrozen. We were told in order to receive ours, we had to take a new insurance, which seemed to have a lot of questions to it. We voted against the insurance. And our pay remained frozen while the others were reinstated, no strings attached. Who has our back? Why not us?
Hi, folks. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Charles Gillespie. I'm a retired RN with the BSN. I have a couple of concerns that's going on in the school. One of them is the critical race theory. I don't know why you teach kids to hate each other. That just don't make sense. Part of the Marxist agenda is what it is to divide and conquer. The second.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Just so you know, we don't teach critical race theory.
All right. Well, that's good then. The second thing, more important is the vaccine safety that the school is advocating through Thompson Pharmacy, Thompson Pharmacy. It's not a vaccine. It's an experimental mRNA gene therapy, and it's not FDA approved. It has emergency use authorization only. It contains or uses aborted fetal tissue to process. Even one of the vaccines contains the aborted fetal tissue in the actual vaccine. It contains prion crystals that grow in your body and cause health problems. It contains fight proteins that cause adverse side effects. There's been as many as 45,000 deaths already reported to the VAERS, excuse me, to the Vaccine Reporting Agency or system. And that's usually low, is what they say. Now, some believe it's a depopulation program worldwide. And I also believe that at this point, because nothing else makes sense. Why would we push so much for vaccine? Now, the kids haven't died in the last year and a half. But now all of a sudden, we've got to push vaccines on them. If there's one question on safety, I think we all should hold off on it because it just doesn't make sense. They're 99.99% cured without any treatment. They have an immune system. That's what it's for. I'm sorry. And the big pharma also has zero liability on the vaccines. So they'll continue to make billions of dollars on the backs of us people. And now they want to do it on the backs of our children. Wouldn't it make sense just to wait on the kids? Fact, say them later on if we find that nothing's wrong. And if I'm wrong, praise God, I'm glad I'm wrong because there'll be less injuries. But if I'm right, and stuff happens to our children, and sterilization is one of the causes too, or one of the reactions because it attacks the ovaries and the testes as well. It crosses the blood brain barrier. I'm very emotional about this because I can't believe what they're doing. They're actually killing people. It's, if you read their literature, Klaus Schwab wrote a book on it. It's called Corona, The Great Reset. It's available on Amazon, and it's the whole plan. And the next thing, they'll cut off food supply in the chain to further put the squeeze on. So we need to wake up now for the safety of our children. I mean, if you keep, continue to push this agenda, it just doesn't make sense. I have a form here.
Okay.
Go ahead. Just turn it down. It should go down, yeah.
Oh, it's.
You should be able, you should be able to turn it down.
Oh, okay.
There we go. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. My name is Melissa McQ, and I'm here. I worked in mental health for many years, many, many years, until I was maybe 59. And then when I lost my job, it's hard to find a job at that age. But I ended up working in education, believe it or not. And I ended up doing substitute teaching. I'm not in this district, but I ended up being a substitute teacher. And just found out I was so passionate about the students, and I just loved it. You know, I still love it. I'm still a substitute teacher. But, you know, my concern, and again, I'm not, I'm not subbing in this district. And I don't know what your policies are at this point when the schools open up. My concern, and I did give you a copy, so, because it's, 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 it's an article that kind of explains about the mask thing. And I'm going to relay some personal experiences about that. I can't, I can't wear a mask medically. So I, my job was greatly decreased last year. I didn't get called. Now, they did put me behind Plexiglas for a while in the beginning of the school year, which, I mean, it was like this big. And, but anyway, and then I, they put me in another room. But I, towards the end of the school year, I could not work because they needed that room for, for testing purposes. So I lost a lot of, of income at that point. And I'm by myself, and I'm on early social security. So it's, you know, it's, it's been a real difficult road. And I'm, I'm one that wants to work. I don't want to sit at home. I, you know, I, I need a purpose to get up in the morning, and going to substitute teach was just my purpose, I felt. But anyway, the reason that, that I wanted to speak to a school board is because, just to, from what I saw and the mental health effects that this has all had on kids. I'm also a certified mental health first aid instructor for adolescents, children, older adults, and adults. And I don't know if you've ever heard of mental health first aid. It's kind of like the Red Cross First Aid, only for mental health issues. And I saw it myself in the schools, but just, just a few points. I mean, you can read the article yourself. Is that they, they found that in his past year and a half, what, almost two years, that especially in adolescents and in younger children. Now, if there was a, if there was a predisposed mental health issue, depression or anxiety, it like doubled. The rate doubled. But if they didn't have that, a lot of kids developed depression and anxiety. And I, you know, I will give you a perfect example of, in a junior high I was in, a girl kind of felt drawn to come and talk to me. And I was always open to talk to kids. And I said, are you anxious? This was before this started. It was the year before. I said, are you anxious to be out of school? She said, no. And I said, why? And she said, because I feel safe when I come to school. And I said, you feel safe? And, I mean, she described the situation. It was a horrible situation, and it brought tears to my eyes. And she's all I could think of when the school was closed. That's, she's the only kid I could, I could think of. And how many other kids were put back into abusive homes, and, and school was their safe place? It, it, it is really, really sad. Anxiety, PTSD from abuse and stuff. A lot of kids displayed PTSD. I saw that even be, you know, like when this first started, kids would, kids would act out. And I asked the kids, when this first started, when they were doing the hybrid method. I said to the kids, you probably are really liking this because you only have to go every other day, and you can work from home. And almost all of them said, no, we don't like it. One of the, one of the fun things about school was seeing your friends. And unless their name falls next doors in the alphabet, we don't see them anymore. And we can't socialize with our friends. So that was one thing they, they said about it. And granted, like the mental health issues with these kids, it depends on the history, like how long they've had it, the severity of the trauma that they've experienced. But this in and of itself has been a trauma to them. You know, their world, like the first year, kids couldn't graduate. You know, they didn't have a graduation ceremony. They didn't have, you know, like they were told they couldn't have parties. But one of the things is the masks, and that was, that was one of my concerns. I, I started to do research on it. And they said that, that first of all, there, there has never been any research outcome data, any science behind masks. Do they work? And they said, well, you know, and they, they can't produce the outcomes. But what they did produce was outcome data about the harm that masks were doing to kids. Young kids, especially young kids, they, parents sent them to school with a clean mask. And when they came home at the end of the day, they collected the masks, and they, they sent them to, the, this doctor helped them do it. They sent it to a lab. It wasn't here. They found all kinds of deadly bacteria, SARS bacteria, and all kinds of, all kinds of bacteria that potentially extremely dangerous to these kids. And so, so physically, it's, it's not doing them any good. And like I said, I don't know what your policy is for starting this school year. And I'm just, you know, I'm just presenting these facts and hope that it, you know, that it won't be that way for them. But the other thing is that they, I always made them wear their masks. Like if, when I was in the auditorium, I said, you have to be socially distanced. I followed the school's rules. I said, if you're socially distanced, you can take a mask break, but make sure that you put your mask on when you go out in the hall. You know, that's, I absolutely insist on that. And what's that?
Time.
Yeah. Time. Oh, okay. Well, anyway, it's just, it's causing a whole lot more of mental health issues with kids. And I'm just, yeah, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Chris Gahart. I came to actually talk to you about two things. One would have been the masks that we do within the school. I know at our last school board meeting, we talked about our policies and what we're doing within the school about how it was recommended but not mandated. I thought that that was good, that we're leaving it up to us, the parents, to decide whether or not it would be beneficial for our children to wear the mask or to not wear the mask. The concern that I had was, when it comes to transportation, anytime any of the students are under transportation, we're telling them that they have to. It is now mandatory when you're being transported from one place to another. It didn't make sense to me because it was, if they can be in the same classroom at the same distance without wearing it, then why are we making them wear it on the bus? As a parent, I, I don't have a problem if other parents or other, even other students' children want to wear the masks. They want to do that. I believe that it's their choice and be their right to actually wear that mask. If they feel that, hey, they need to do it for whatever reasons, because their parents and them, they're going to know best about themselves, then I'm going to know about them or some other parent. So it was just, it's a concern. I think we should give the parents the ability to decide, do you want, is it best for your child to wear it, or is it best for your child not to wear it? The other issue that I wanted to bring, bring up was, I'd heard some issues with the curriculum that we teach here at the Altinary School District. My concern is that there are certain things that are changing, that are being happening. An example, the example that was given to me was that we are removing Paul Revere from our social studies and history, and that we are inserting Oprah instead. And it didn't make sense to me, but I'm being an engineer and somewhat of a scientist. I want to have the ability to actually look at, to read, to determine, what are we doing, what's happening, so that I can make the best decision possible.
I'm going to cover that one real fast. I'm going to cover both of your questions. First of all, federal law mandates that we require masking on, on school buses and all school transportation. Excuse me. It's a mandate. It's a law. I'm not going to argue with you. I'm not going to argue with you in this, and I'm not discussing this. Sir, I'm not discussing this. Second of all, I don't know where you're getting your information from. But we have not in any way, shape, or form sought to remove anything from our social studies curriculum. What we are trying to do at this point is we're trying to make sure we can get kids in the school and teach the social studies curriculum.
Right.
So I don't know where you're getting that from, but it didn't come, it didn't come from, from us.
Okay.
Most definitely didn't come from the board. It did not come from our faculty. And if.
That is, that is one of the reasons why, sir, I'm looking to actually look into what's in the curriculum. So I can see and say, okay, hey, was the information correct? Was the information not correct? But I wanted to bring it to your attention so that you knew that the information is out there. It's being passed out into the actual public. It's, I like to verify. I trust but verify, so I always like to verify.
We're making it, somebody's making an accusation, and I can't control what people put online. But I can assure you, we're teaching the state mandated curriculum, which was approved by the legislature in the Senate and the governor of the state of Pennsylvania. Probably the social studies curriculum, I believe, was adopted in 2003, 2004. Okay, so any of these new concerns that have come out, we, we haven't changed our curriculum in that time.
All right, that's understood. I mean, I said, I still, I, I still am just one of those people. I need to look and verify. But the last thing is, I noticed in our board notes that there's the ability for us to actually look at the documentation that you referenced within this. Since I'm new to this, is there a place that I can go to look at this before the meeting to see what the attached file is, or? Because there's a file on here that says, and I know you guys are all provided that file. I'm just curious, is there a way that we?
If you go to Board Docs, it's all, all the public content is available through Board Docs.
Okay.
So it's, it's all online through Board Docs.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Last year, because of COVID, unfortunately, we weren't able to have a student representative. And as you all know, that is a nice addition to our board, and it gives a, it gives that liaison between the student body and the school board. This year, our student representative, I'm not going to take away from her because she has her introduction. But our student representative is, she's a senior. Mackenzie Kelly is her name, very involved within the school. Secretary of Student Council, correct? Senior class. Okay, I had that wrong. So as you know, our students is selected from either, they have to be an officer of student council or the senior class. So she is the secretary of the senior class. They go through an interview process, and then they're selected from there. So we welcome Mackenzie here this evening. She will have a report that will give you her background as well as some things that are going on this year. So welcome.
All right, Bryce. Sharon. Cheryl, we'll get to you in a sec. It's, it's a pleasure to inform you that Bryce Cosner has, has recently been granted a renewal of the status of a Pennsylvania certified school business official for a period of four years. You are to be complimented for having a member of your administrative and supervisory staff who meets this original purchase, personal, ethical, and professional standards established by this program. Professional commitment to keep management and technical skills updated has been made. We hope you and the other members of the board will continue to make participation in professional development programs possible. Since members of your Board of School Directors and community will undoubtedly appreciate learning of this achievement, we suggest that you present the enclosed certificate at a formal board meeting. I'd like to say thank you, Bryce, for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. We're going to, Sharon, Sharon. Let's go this way. Thanks, Bryce.
Okay, moving along. Can I get a motion and a second for the regular board minutes?
So.
For the August 2nd meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Finance, cafeteria payments, general fund payments, financial reports, investments, tax collection, statement of revenue and expense. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'm sorry, what? A and B, yes. No questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. The Keith Athletic Field lease agreement. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
Yes, my concern was with the price and the length of the agreement.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a very good plan presented. It will certainly benefit our community and our children to return the Keith Athletic Field to a recreational area for children. And, and I think it speaks well for a community that looks after the total needs of its kids, its children. And, and this will be a great addition to the Fairview neighborhood. It'll be a great addition to our overall community. So I, I, I think it's a great project.
And a, and an answer to Mrs. Irwin Adams's question. The lease is a, is a standard lease used, that's done between school districts and public, and, and public entities such as a soccer club. We have a couple of other leases that are 99-year leases, and they're for a dollar. All the improvements are, are made by the club. All the responsibility of the facility falls on the club. It's a, it's, for lack of a better word, it's a joint venture between the school district and the, and the soccer, soccer group or any other related organization to, to create a, a facility for children. So the lease falls into that kind of standard structure.
I mean, I guess my concern, and some of you already know this, was that we had an offer on the table for a purchase, and we never actually voted on it. Now we're leasing it to the soccer club. So that, that's my biggest concern, I guess.
Yes. I myself, I welcome this plan. When we built the school, we took the children's playground down here at Leopold. We need something on, on the other end of town up there. This group's going to put in tennis courts, basketball, pickleball. It's something for the community, a walk and track. They, they need something up there. We met with them at our last meeting. They're after some money from the city. I hope you get it. City Council, if you're listening, be generous with this group. It's for the kids. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I, I wanted to say that initially, when I first heard about this, I don't know that the district should be in the business of, of green space, for, for lack of a better term. You know, I, I think we need as many tax generating real estate parcels as we can get. However, upon reviewing the, the lease agreement and discussions, and I just want to verify this, that if there, if an entity were to come forward and make a viable offer on this property, does the district have an out to do so in this lease? And that's a question for our solicitor.
The lease agreement includes provision allowing for a right of first refusal to the lesser, but it does allow for potential sale of the property subject to that right of first refusal.
Okay, so doing this does not preclude the district from selling that plot of land in the future?
No, it limits it a little bit. They need to give the soccer club the right to potentially match any offer that's received. But after that point, that it's permissible.
Thank you.
To, to follow up on that real quick, if the soccer group puts so much money in, if we do sell it, can the soccer group recoup that money they put in? You know, if they made an improvement, say of $500,000 or something, and we sell it, do they get that money back, which I think they should, if they have a capital improvement? And we sell it underneath them, they should get that money back, correct?
That's not currently provided for in the lease agreement. That is part of why. the lease agreement has a term as lengthy as it does. A lot of the time, it is fairly common for lease, when you see a ninety nine year lease or a hundred year lease, is in order to show commitment to the enterprise continuing over time. A lot of times, lessies that need to, that do intend to make substantial improvements, need to show that length of a term to get financing for those improvements to sort of verify that they're going to have, that they have the contractual commitment to that. And so that's part of the commitment. Currently, though, the language in the agreement provides that the improvements eventually become the property of the lesser, meaning the school district.
Then to go back to the original question, if you sell it for actually a pretty substantial amount and boards change, and another board comes in and wants to get, purchase that field back, you know, for, for a housing project, whatever. That, that group that put the money into the, into that soccer field should be reimbursed somehow, the improvements that they had. But it may not be common, but it could happen. And, and I'm saying that this group would be out of a certain amount of money, which I feel is wrong if they put that money in. The district is probably going to make money on itself, the land that they should reimburse the, the soccer group for what type of money they put in. That, that's just my opinion, that's.
I guess I just want to follow up, like my kids have personally benefited from the use of that, that field. So I am an advocate for the soccer club, but my decision tonight is going to be based on my fiscal responsibility to the school district.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Breen?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff? Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
Yeah.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Dr. Malloy?
Yes.
This is six two, motion passes. Moving on to policy. Altuna School District Final Reading of Weapons, Terroristic Threats, Hazing, Bullying, Cyberbullying, Emergency Preparedness and Response and School Security Personnel. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Education, Revised Behavioral Services Agreement, Blair Family Solutions, AEDY Agreements, EDNAV Update for William K. Kimmel Alternative Program at Stevens, Step-by-Step Learning Agreement, Ignite Education Solutions Agreement. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So how we doing on Stevens? We, uh, repair, are we, is there a timeline that's? Is that a timeline that's going to be open? Is this a rush, rush job?
Aye. Second. Aye.
Mrs. Breen, would you, Mrs. Breen, I'm sorry, can you put your mic on?
Keep going on.
I'm sorry, we are having the resignation of one of our board members tonight, Mr. Baker. And I would like to read to you his letter of resignation. This letter serves to inform you that I am voluntarily resigning from my position of Altuna Area School District Board of Directors. The resignation is effective Monday, August the sixteenth, twenty twenty one. I have been recommended for a position at the Altuna Area High School. For the Pennsylvania School Code, an elected official cannot hold a paid position at said district. My resignation allows the board to vote on my hire at the August sixteenth, twenty twenty one school board meeting. It has been an honor and privilege to serve as a school board member. Thank you for your professionalism during my time on the board. I am grateful for the bonds we formed and thankful for your dedication to public education. I would wish each of you the best as you guide the Altuna Area School District as it strives for continued excellence. Michael J. Baker, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you, Mike. We've enjoyed it and best wishes.
Thank you, Mrs. Breen. I just like, if I could just take a moment, I just want to thank board in person for welcoming me, being accepting of my viewpoints, which are sometimes very different. But I, I said from the get-go, I think this is a really unique group because we all have very different backgrounds. And I, I think despite some, some public quarrels from time to time, I think we're a pretty good, strong unit that really relies on each other's strengths. So thank you to the board members, thank you to Dr. Prietal and the administrative team for everything you do. The information you bring us, the reports we get, sharing all the details. As an educator myself, it's very exciting to, to know that such passionate people are, are running the day-to-day operations of the district. And I also want to publicly thank my family. This is not an easy job. Mr. Cruz and I were having a little chat today about that. Anybody who's ever thought about running for office, he, he, he might think school board, wow, how hard can it be? It's a very tough job. And I commend all of you on the board and anybody thinking of running and running this November because it is not easy. And thank you to my family because there are many, many long nights and Carl Beard's not here tonight. I always joke with him because one night he leaned over to me and said, this will be a short meeting. He saw the agenda, it was three and a half hours. So there are many long nights here, but this move, just so everyone knows, the public knows. I appreciate all the support, starting back in the, in the primary two years ago. But this is just a, a personal and career decision for me. And I think it's in the best interest of myself and my family, and ultimately that's the most important thing. So once the, once this vote is, if my resignation is accepted, I will awkwardly walk away from the table. But thank you, thank you, everybody. It's been an honor to serve with you.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second?
Well, first, can I say, if we vote no, does he have to stay?
I don't think that's an option.
All right. Well, then I will move it.
And I will second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Breen?
Yes.
Mr. Francis? Mr. Hoff? Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams? Mr. Johnston? Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Malloy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, the next item is an instructional election. And I've lost my paper. Okay, it is Michael Baker and he is for the position of Instructional Literacy Staff Coach at the Altuna Area High School. He is coming back to the high school to teach. Can I have a motion in a second?
At second.
Okay. Any conversation? Can we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin Adams? Mr. Johnston? Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mrs. Breen?
Yes.
Welcome back. Okay, moving on, personnel items. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Oh, yes. Our last meeting, you had a resignation of a department head for English. Is that position going to be refilled? Okay, thank you.
We put out for interest from our school, our, our staff members and are currently interviewing and considering. Yep.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Since our last meeting, and it was like not even two weeks ago, Paul, I think. How many more teachers have we lost? How many SEAs have we gained or lost? Where are we at in our hunt for SEAs? I gave Brad the head up, I was going to ask this, but since our last meeting, how many teachers have we lost? So how many have we lost total? I'm going to go back and I'm going to ask if we have this number. How many teachers have we lost in the last three months from the Altuna Area School District, not through retirement? Okay, well, my issue is the same issue I had before. We've got teachers and I, I, I'm very sad to see people that have dedicated their life to teaching not finding a permanent home with the Altuna Area School District. These are good people. I've talked to a lot of them. And one of the concerns I do have at this point is, are we going to have to increase class sizes? Because we are short of teachers at this time. Where are we at with our SCA situation? I want to get to the bottom of why people are not happy working for this school district. And I'm telling you, there are a lot of people not happy working for this school district. I don't know the reason. I would like to know the reason. Once again, I'm going to ask the question because I've talked to several people who have since left this district and told me, no, they were not asked to come in for an exit interview. And I want to know, are we doing exit interviews? I, I continue to harp on this, but I want to know why our teachers, and once again, if they can make thirty thousand dollars more driving thirty minutes, I get it. I understand that. But I want to know why this isn't the place that they choose to work for the rest of their career as an educator? And are we doing exit interviews? I was told we are asked, those people that are leaving the district are not interviewed. The only thing they're asked to do is turn in their keys.
We, we do building level exit interviews for any employee and, and or department in which those employees are working. So if they're in a building, if they're a teacher, they would be with their building principal. If they are an employee that would work in maintenance or whatever it may be, they would, they would meet with the supervisor and or director of that department. We, we did have some turnover in our HR department over the summer. We were without a director for a couple of months. And I know that we have a survey in place that any, any employee that leaves, that we do send them a survey that they then complete and we do make available to board members. So Adam, go ahead.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I know you got thrown into the deep end of the pole here in the eleventh hour. And I appreciate the job you're doing. And if you could give me that answer, I would be in your debt. Thank you.
And without getting into specifics on, on specific employees, I can tell you that in looking at every employee that we have that has chosen to leave the district, whether it be on a resignation to move to another school district, another employment opportunity, retirement, whatever it may be, we talk to them personally because we want to know what is motivating someone to not want to remain here? Inconsistently, what we are hearing is that employees love our school district. They, they love the family, they love the people that they work with and that they're, they're having very mixed feelings about leaving. But they have a variety of reasons. We had a number of employees that were able to move closer to their hometown. We had a number of employees that due to personal relationships with a spouse or a significant other, they moved to be with that person. They were relocating for that purpose. We did have a number of employees that had financial incentives to move to another school district and or area. They were given a significant enough raise that they felt like that that was a positive career move for them. Once again, they still had very mixed feelings about leaving the district, some of which are employees that have been with us for over twenty years. But it was, you know, I hate to say it, an offer that they couldn't refuse at this point in their career. To my knowledge, we don't have any of the employees that I know of that have resigned, that are doing so in a negative way, that they are unhappy with their working conditions, unhappy with the employees that they work with, with their students, or with the job that they're provided with on a daily basis. There were motivations that were either personal and or financial that prompted them to leave our school district. Now that being said, I will tell you that we've been a part of the interview process all summer and it has been a very trying time because we've had a number of employees that have accepted positions and since rescinded because they continue to look for employment at other locations and were offered a sweeter deal somewhere else. The educator poll I know is Dr. Prietal talked about is getting thinner and thinner, especially in some particular areas. We're finding special education teachers are very, very hard to come by. Specifically speaking about SEAs, our current number is one fourteen. We held interviews last week where we interviewed three employees for potential employment. We would like to be at about one twenty. Our total number of needs is right around one fifty. So we're about thirty short of where we need to be, to be what we would call full staff as SEAs. It's a difficult job market right now. I think, you know, most employers would tell you that. And we are, we are no different. We've held employee drives, we've held, you know, many evening events to try to attract employees to our district. We've offered various incentives and we're hoping that we will continue to attract quality people here at the Altuna School District to meet the needs of our kids.
Can you assure me and the teachers and the parents and the students that our shortage of teachers at this point, due to this exodus, is not going to affect class size?
We, we've replaced every position that we had, that we had vacated. We did not attrition any positions, so our class size numbers should remain the same as they were before, depending on our enrollment in our cyber academy and whatnot. That will fluctuate a little bit. However, our class sizes are still more than manageable at all levels.
And I want to thank you for answering the question. I want to thank you very much, Brad, for always, when I have an inquiry, you are in depth with it and always give me a satisfactory answer. So I appreciate it. I just, once again, love this school district and I can't imagine that we're losing the amount of teachers we are.
I have a question. Who does the exit interviews?
The exit interviews themselves at the building level. So if it would be a teacher at the high school, it would be conducted by a building level administrator. That would be a personal sit-down with the employee to collect their artifacts or items or technology, talk with them about, you know, whatever their experiences were. There is then a survey that is sent to the employee for them to complete and then submit back into HR.
What, what if the problem is their direct supervisor? Should we be having an independent person or someone?
But that's the reason we do the survey, so they can say, they can be free about what they want to say because that's not going to go back to the principle where their supervisor goes straight to HR.
I, I think previously we talked about the board getting copies of those surveys. So, and I know we've been in limbo, so, but.
There, there was, I know there was, there was a group, there was a, I know a large PDF that was sent out. I want to say it was in April or May, if something had been collected up until that point. But once we get these out and we have those collected, we will get those out to the board as well. Absolutely. Mr. Cat, can we, can we just put that on the agenda to kind of compile on a monthly basis? Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Personnel.
I'm a, I'm a no on John Blyer. I don't think anyone will be able to take care of Stevens as well as. I don't think anyone will be able to take care of Stevens as well as he did, so I'm a no on him.
Okay. So all in favor with the exception of Ed and John Blyer.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Student services, beacon light agreement. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes. Business operations, repository bids, capital reserve list of payments. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Is this on ten A, correct?
Yes.
So. I don't understand if it's two hundred dollars, but the market value is ninety five thousand just this year.
The state is the one who runs, the city's the one who runs the repository. It's. It's obviously misassessed. Because I'm sure they, if it was a value, if it was, if it was a property of even half of that value. It would have gone in the share of sale and or the and or the foreclosure sale prior to it ending on the repository list.
So within eight months, it went from a ninety five thousand dollar value down to a two hundred dollar value.
Again, it's probably been in the repository for probably a couple, I'm gonna say, two to three years it takes to get to this point.
Wouldn't that have devalued the property because it says the twenty twenty one market value is ninety five eight? It just seems like a big discrepancy between what we're selling it, well, what it's being sold for and the market value.
Or the city's, yes.
I'm opposed. I think it should be tabled till we get the right amount personally, but I'm just opposed to.
I'll second the motion to table it.
Second.
What is the Prater Group agreement?
They are going to, they are going to be looking at our our hospital level billing for properness billing versus care. We'll be doing an analysis of it and looking at that discrepancies, et cetera. There is, there will be no cost, no.
Any other?
Why do we need St. Mary's still?
Logistical, the location versus versus where the police and the other technology people are still in that building. So we're releasing a hand, how many spots we're leasing there?
It's sixteen and it's the smaller B lot up at the top.
Right. Right. Two blocks, three blocks. You you understand the St. Mary's up is up by the boat tech. And the Blair Family Solutions, which is on, which is off Seventh. And the lot we're giving them spaces in is right there. Originally, the Blair Family Solutions was in the ISB lot. And until we moved in, we allowed them to continue to lease those spots. We have, we've recovered and we're creating a bigger lot here. And so. Shall we call it in and act of good neighborship? We are extending them to be able to to lease spots in that lot because we can't give them lots, spots in the ISB lot because of the number of people we have parked there.
The the folks that we have at the CTCs are police services and our technology folks that need to be transient. They're gonna be in and out. So we need to have, we need basically need to have guaranteed spots for our police vehicles and for our technology. Mobile personnel that are in and out of the buildings and go into the elementary schools to triage and support technology in those buildings.
They're actually carrying things oftentimes. The technology people, they might have brought a. Ben of computers back with them. So they need as close of access to that space as possible. And keep their car close by in case they have their equipment in the car.
For that room, yes. That has never been the case in the past.
That too. Do they have the capability of us to park in their lot?
I'd have to, I'd have to talk to Eric whether he has that capability or not. I just know we've always, we have always been in some form in the St. Mary's lot. When and we've had various levels of production in the in the CTC at all times. We were renting the space in the CTC for probably twenty some years.
The the proximity to the space, so like right where the loading dock is, right inside before you actually get into the CTC. Is where the spaces that we rent for police services and for technology. So that proximity to the parking lot allows us, as Mrs. Hoy alluded to, bringing materials in and out. If we have parents that need to come to have devices set up with hotspots, things of that nature, there's relatively easy, you know, accessibility to that area. Then obviously with police services responding to emergencies or calls, they have quick access to their vehicles from there.
Will that be their permanent home?
Yes, good.
Anymore? All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed to the St. Mary's lease and the Blair Family Solutions. The rest of it I'm okay with. Anyone else?
I'm F and E too.
Motion passes. Facilities maintenance. Building roof recommendation. Could we have some information on that?
Sure.
I placed the the tally sheet at everyone's. Desk seat. Since it was a late addition.
We just received the bids for the roof. Our. Our projected cost or our. What's we're hunting for? The feasibility study that was done by by Weber Murphy Fox, their estimate of cost was gonna be approximately two point seven million. When we ran ran the bids, the bids came in approximately one million sixty four thousand. I can't read the whole form the way I have it structured here, but that gives us. That's a better than fifty percent below the projected cost of the project would be. So we're recommending to the board that obviously a piece of this will be covered by the insurance for the one section of the roof. But the roof is twenty eight years old. It does have serious flaws and issues over ninety percent of the surface. And this is, quite frankly, this price is extremely good for the, from the district standpoint, from the bids that we received.
Who are you recommending? What would?
Union?
Do we know how much we're getting back on the insurance for that?
It's gonna cover what section of the roof, Doug? It's roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Not yet.
My question's gonna be, with the renovation of the A building, why wouldn't that new roof be included? Because it wasn't part of the project and we didn't have an issue with the the roof. When we changed the upper roof, you saw the cracks and the issues and we're like, how's this, how does this seal? That roof has, is in excellent shape. The membrane held up quite well. It didn't show the age, and so it wasn't part of the project. What happened is when we had that terrible windstorm, it separated the membrane from the insulation. It caused a flapping issue in the roof where it actually surged it up into the air and separated. So it was. We believe that the damage that's there was driven by that windstorm. And we're negotiating with the insurance company. They believe one section of it was caused by the windstorm. It still needs to be replaced. There's a lot of walking around up there with maintenance. The air handles are put up there. I mean, there's a lot of equipment that went up there. And it's, that's a lot of money for the school district to eat. People are saying uncle with this whole building project and it's just one thing after another. I. That's a tough one. I'd say there was a lot of work going on up there in that roof. Lot of crane work, lot of walking around. I just can't see paying a million dollars for that.
Anyone else? All in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed to it.
Okay. New business debt resolution. We have some answers to our questions from the last meeting regarding our. Refinancing of our debt.
The last Monday, we marketed the district's two thousand twenty one refundings of the two thousand thirteen. And kudos to this board for your quick and swift action to allow us to be in a position to refund that issue so quickly. Because since we've been tracking it, the savings we're about to go over are some of the highest savings we've seen on that issue since. You've authorized us to move forward. We were able to lock in an average rate of just over one point seven percent on that. That brought to a bottom line savings to the district of cash flow of roughly one point three, over one point three million. And with some contingency closing, it's probably closer to thirty two thousand at closing. So cash flow plus cash or cash flow savings plus funds at closing, probably about one million three hundred and fifty thousand. Well over the threshold we set two weeks ago of a million dollars with the savings. So the market's been very volatile. We've seen rates change from anywhere from ten to twenty basis points within a given day. It just so happened when we did this transaction, the next day they were up, you know, twelve basis points. Yes.
The basis point is a hundredth of a percent.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, one one hundredth of one percent. And that sounds like a very small number, but those very small numbers matter when you're funding transactions. Because they mean thousands and tens of thousands of dollars for every movement of one basis point. So for instance, on this transaction, we issued roughly thirty five million dollars worth of bonds. One basis point was probably forty thousand. So for every small move in the market, you gain forty thousand more in savings. So if it wasn't for that action, when we had that special meeting in June, we never would have been in a position to issue these bonds last week. So thank you very much for the opportunity for allowing us to move so quickly and locking into the district. Now, that being said, what's going on with the other two transactions? We've updated the savings report for both of those on the second page of this presentation. What you're gonna notice is that that, those particular transactions, they're long term transactions. They have roughly twenty seven to twenty eight years left on each one of those. The refunding that we just completed was roughly twelve years. So if you think about when you go to the bank to get a mortgage, or if you go to the bank to buy a CD. A five year CD is a lower rate than a twenty five year CD. Same with bond issues. So the longer the bonds go out, the higher the rates. The yield curve or the difference between the short term and the long term rates over the past two weeks has shifted. So even when you were doing this transaction on the short term, the longer term rates were starting to inch up. You can see those attributable in the savings that you're gonna see tonight. They're all lower than we projected even two weeks ago when we sat in front of you. So those two transactions, even though the first one saved more, they actually are saving less. So why is that important? Because we don't wanna put you in a situation where you're just doing a refunding just to save a little bit of money. We think it should always be worthwhile. It's your one bite at the apple. It's your one chance. So we wanna make sure that when you take that chance. That you are using your right resources and saving enough money for that opportunity. So we created a matrix so you could see where rates would go to in order to save the same amount that you're gonna save today. So that page three that you have in front of you is a new page that you didn't, haven't seen before. And that goes over three different scenarios. It goes over a scenario of where savings today. And then we've, we solved it for where would rates have to be next year? And then where would rates have to be in two thousand twenty five to save the exact same amount that you're saving today? So you can make an educated decision about, oh, rates good today? How far will rates have to move before I made the wrong decision? Well, if you're just looking at today's rates, a year from now, if rates were to move up fifteen basis points. A fifteen basis point move, which I said we're moving fifteen basis points daily. Then if they're higher than that, then you would save less than you would today. So that's a very small move. That tells me, oh, my gosh, this is a good transaction. Maybe we should do it. Well, until you look at where would rates have to be in two thousand twenty five, when I can do this tax exempt. And that's what that third line is. So in two thousand twenty five, all of a sudden, rates can be about a percent higher. And you would still save the same amount of money today. So that's, that gives you some more cushion, even though a percent still isn't a lot. That gives you more cushion than the fifteen basis points. But what that doesn't consider is that that's comparing taxable rates that you would pay today because your taxable rate on those long term transactions would be about three percent. So when it gets closer to four percent in two thousand twenty five, you would still save the same amount. However, in two thousand twenty five, it doesn't have to be taxable, it can be tax exempt. So tax exempt rates are even a percent lower than that three percent today. So if this could be tax exempt, it would be two percent. So all of a sudden, I know this is a lot of number, a lot of percentages, but that tells me we've got a cushion of two percent to move. Until two thousand twenty five. Again, two percent, it could happen, we can move, but that gives you a little bit more leeway in projecting of. Do I move forward with both of these refundings or what do we set as our benchmark? What's gonna make sense? On the bottom of that page is a red line. That red line is sort of our break even in two thousand twenty five. So you could. We can illustrate how, how many times over the last ten years have rates been higher than that? That three point nine five percent. So you can see from that graph, for the last, realistically, for the last seven years, we've been lower. Now, that should have been a unique time in the market. The economy has. Now, that should have been a unique time in the market. The economy has grown so much, rates have gone lower. Obviously, the pandemic doesn't mean rates weren't get, won't get to 4%, but, but this is meant is to project is that I think we're gonna have many opportunities, no matter what happens. However, if we can save a large amount of money, we should. So what we're getting at is that the resolution you have in front of you is a little different than the first resolution you passed two weeks ago. It has a different target in it. Two weeks ago, we set a dollar amount for the target of a million. On this resolution, because it involves two different pieces, we wanted to set a higher threshold, a higher water, uh, wa- high water level before we move forward. And that's why we worked with your administration said, if you can save 10% on either issue, that's probably a good number to move forward. And that's what that resolution you have in front of you tonight says. Now, when you look at your two transactions, only one of them fits the analysis of saving you 10% into the 2018. The 2018A is not there. I mean, at this point, we don't think it saves you enough and is worth using your opportunity to refund it. It's your decision, but our recommendation is from past experience, going through the analysis, that you should have an opportunity to save more, hopefully keep our fingers crossed in the future on that transaction and not rush forward with that today. The 2018A though, does save a substantial amount of money in today's market and should be considered for refunding based upon rates. So that being said, it's a lot of information. If you'd like to ask questions before you vote on it, we'd be glad to answer. And again, I have Chris Burr, your bond counsel is here as well. If there's any questions on that resolution.
So you are recommending possibly taking a look at the 2018, not the 2018A?
Well, no. So both you, the resolution authorizes both transactions, if you can meet a threshold, the threshold we set. And you can make that threshold whatever you want. We just set that, talking to your administration, at a 10% net savings level to you. So in order to move forward with either, you have to save a minimum of 10% of the principal outstanding. So for instance, the 2018 is roughly 40 or 35 million. So you'd have to save a minimum present value. You save, it's not cash flow, present value of 3.5 million. It's currently saving 4 million in savings. The 2018A is roughly 48 million. So you'd need to save at a minimum based on 10%, 4.8 million. It's only about half of that right now. So it doesn't meet that criteria. You are voting to set that criteria tonight. Our recommendation based upon the analysis was 10%. You can lower it. It's your decision. But currently it's set at 10%, but that is.
To this, then right now we would only be um, taking action on the 2018. Is that correct?
The 2000, the 2018 fits that scenario.
Correct.
A month from now, because obviously we're changing daily. And again, one hundredth of one basis point matters. You could be in a scenario where you refunded the 2018 next week and a month from now, all of a sudden rates went lower and now the 2018 meets at 10% as well. So the resolution gives you the opportunity to separate them. But they both, you can't do, you can do one or the other. You could do both. But when you do either, they have to meet that 10% threshold. You can change that. If you feel like that's too high of a threshold, you wanna move to 8%, you have that ability. That was just our recommendation.
I think that's brilliant. I mean, we just talked about the savings we had with your last recommendation. I think 10%, I mean, obviously anyone would want any percentage of savings. But 10% to give you the flexibility to do that, and once again, this to me is a no-brainer. I mean, it really is. If we can save that money and put that towards something else, it's, I thank you for the work you've already done in the recommendations you made. And you're to be applauded for the savings we've already got. So I'm a whole gal on this.
Do you think we're gonna get on the 2018A? Do you think we're gonna get, gonna get to 10%? Savings because.
Well, so two things I have, I have, I'm, I'm, I don't know. And I'm, I'm not gonna make a, a projection of whether you'll get there or not, because I've seen, you know, if I, if I had a nickel for every time I was in front of a school board and said rates are an all-time low, if you look at that chart, rates have done nothing since 2001 but go lower. So, you know, are we gonna go lower than they are today? It's a possibility. It's also a possibility they go higher. All we can do is pass this resolution, keep our fingers crossed. If in three months, the board decides, okay, we, you didn't hit that target, maybe we should lower it. You can always lower your target and pass it in the resolution. So this doesn't lock you in forever. You can always adjust the resolution if for some reason you decide we're not gonna get there and we'll take 7%. But based upon everything we saw, at least in 2025, you're gonna, you're gonna be, as long as rates stay within the realm of 2% or less, you're gonna get there. I didn't answer your question. I'm sorry. I can't answer your question. Well, remember, it's your one shot. It's, you got one shot at this. So is refunding $45 million worth of bonds to save 2 million? It's really below a, a threshold that we would set. You know, maybe it's not 10% on that issue, maybe it's 8%, but I know we're there on the 2018. I just don't wanna, I don't, you know, I issue bonds for a living. That's what I do. I don't feel like we're quite there on that issue yet to pull the trigger and to achieve those savings. But it's your decision.
The $45 million eight, 2018As, the, the issue comes down to, if we wait till 2025, we will make up whatever, and, and the rates stay reasonable.
Yes.
We will be able to recoup everything that we may have, may have not saved in the three years waiting for that or four years waiting for that to happen versus, versus making a move now, which locks us in for 10 years.
Yes.
And it means we're gonna be taxable for 10 years. The rates locked in for 10 years and we can't advance refund it because we're only allowed to advance refund it if I remember right, once.
Well, I, I would hand that question to the blind council, but technically this is taxable and it's not an advance refunding. So it's not using your bite at the apple.
So we could, but it would take that much more to make it profitable.
Maybe. There's a probability that could happen, but uh, but let's not bet, let's not do a transaction and bet on what ifs in the future, because when you have to rely upon what is the federal government, we don't wanna put you in that position either.
Any other questions? Okay, um, can we get a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Could we get a, a roll call, please?
Roll call, certainly.
Mr. Hoff? Mr. Hoover?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Erwin Adams? Mr. Johnston? Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mrs. Bream?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, community tree planting event. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quite simply, um, Atlantic Broadband has a tree planting initiative. They did like us to participate in. They can provide a tree or more for every, every school in the district. And um, I see no reason why we don't participate with their, with their proposal to, to plant more trees.
They're gonna actually do the planting of the tree.
So they're, they're gonna handle every aspect of it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, I can't tell you how, yes, it'll be what they give us, right?
Free trees. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, any committees have anything they want to offer tonight?
I just wanna put something out there. I've talked about this before. There is some talk out there. Um, what this school district is driven by is this school board. This school board decides how we're gonna go back to school, how we're gonna conduct issues that involve COVID. It has nothing to do with the teachers. The teachers do not decide on their own that they are not going to work. They are not gonna do what we say. If you have anger or you have hostility towards programs or the direction of the school board, it should be laid at the feet of the board members only. The teachers and the educators are not involved in that discussion whatsoever. So therefore, if you have a problem with the direction of the school board or the school district, that lays at the feet of the elected members sitting here right now. Not at the feet of the teachers, not at the feet of the administrators. It lays at the feet of the people that are elected and we are sitting here. And those concerns can be addressed to us, not to the teachers, because it is not their call. They are only doing the job that we have tasked them to do in the way we tell them to do it. They do their job the way we tell them to, without excuse, and they do it well. So I just wanna get that on the record, because once again, it's out there that our teachers are the ones who are driving these policies. They are not. They have never. Therefore, please, if you have anger or hostility, feel free to bring that to me or any other board member, but do not bring that to school teachers.
Any other committees?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, a, as the rep from uh, Central Blair Rec Commission, prospect pool closed um, for the season, but I'm very appreciative that they opened this year. Um, appreciative for, to Fury Furniture for sponsoring the guards to get them up there. Um, the Qantas Club sponsored um, some events up there. So I just think it's a good thing for the community and I'm happy they were able to open it this year.
So they've closed? Okay, you didn't wait till Labor Day? Okay.
And the thing I'd like to comment on, I, I was involved in a board vacancy when I was, served in the township. So I'm a little bit familiar, but that was years ago. And I, I know we're dealing with timeframes. And I think we, as a board, also need to recognize, I know in the township, we were told that all discussions regarding this board vacancy must be in a public meeting. None of it will be done in executive session. That it uh, is to be as open and transparent all the way with this. And I, I really think we, we need to look at what parameters we're dealing with because we have a short timeframe. He announces his resignation tonight. I understand 30 days. We have to name a replacement for four months. I understand the two parties, major parties will put a nominee on the ballot for November to fill the two-year term. But we as a board have to um, come up with somebody to replace Mike for four months. If we can't do that, it goes to the court of common plea. So I, that's my opinion from when I was on the township and you're the solicitor. You tell us the real story.
Don't you think it would make sense that we had to pass the election that the highest vote getter uh, go on the board?
I, I mean, had.
Doesn't that makes, you know, we had an election.
Yes.
And uh, four, four people or five people running for the board. But the person that received the highest votes, I'm not sure who it was.
It was Stephanie McGinnis.
Stephanie.
Most uh.
So she should actually be the logical choice to, to, to do the uh.
And it takes it out of any kind of politics. You know, the voters decided.
My, my only question is, um, she's only slated on one ticket, whereas there's another candidate.
It will have nothing to do with who gets the two-year or four-year term. This is a replacement for four months from uh, now till December, when the new board would be sworn in. But from my understanding, I'm, I'm gonna let Liz talk, because I, I'm not the solicitor, okay? I don't wanna pretend I am.
That, that's correct. I was gonna cover this in my solicitor's report. So Dr. Malloy just took care of that uh, for the evening for me. Everything that he stated is correct. Uh, relative to the timeframe, you have 30 days to fill the vacancy. That vacancy will be filled for uh, the remainder of the term up through the reorganization date in December. The election in November will determine who holds the seat for the remainder of the term after that point. For this four-month period occurring from now until the December reorganization date, you, the only requirement is that the board fill the vacancy. So there's no requirement that you um, pick among the candidates that are pending as Dr. Malloy described. There's no requirement that indicates that you can't do so. So you have a lot of freedom and discretion there. There isn't a, a rules. You're gonna have to deliberate amongst yourselves as to what you think is the most logical thing. There isn't a, a clear answer on this. Should it be the one on both tickets? Should it be on the highest vote getter? It's something you can debate amongst yourselves um, or make nominations amongst yourselves and see who gets the most votes.
Was Stephanie McGinnis the highest vote getter? Because I understand.
Republican, Democrat. Yes, she was. Second was Val. And uh, I'm only thinking it's a logical solution to the problem. And my understanding is Stephanie is on the ballot for a four-year term. But the two political parties, the Democrat, Republican, will have a person on there for the two-year term. So it would not preclude Stephanie from being on the ballot for the four or the two-year term or both. I, I know in the township, we had an individual that was on there for both. And then when he won, he had to decide which one he wanted to take or design for the other.
First step, we will need to advertise for applications, correct?
It is a common practice. It's actually not required. The requirement is that you appoint the vacancy. Now, if you have somebody in mind in these circumstances, you can proceed to do that. If you prefer, pursue process, which many solicitors do to advertise a step letters of interest, you can use that to, it's really the important discretion. The most significant rule applicable in the process for determining those vacancies is that absolutely all the laborations amongst the board take place in public. Um, the candidates who fill the vacancy are equivalent to employees. So although that type of operation takes place in executive session for employees, not same for.
So we could advertise for people to send a letter of interest that they wanna serve on the board for that short amount of time?
If you choose to do so, you don't have to.
Okay, um, should we take a vote on that?
You could. Someone can make that motion. Any motion that are gonna be made tonight on this, um, really applies and offer opportunity for public comment.
Okay. Um, I will make a motion. Well, how do I wanna put this? Because there's gonna be two answers. Which do you prefer? Or do I have to make two separate motions? Well, that we take letters of interest or that we appoint the highest vote getter from the last. Do I wanna what? It doesn't matter, but I'll make a motion that we do, uh, we request letters of interest from the public. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, can we have a roll call? Oh, yes, sure.
Can I ask only, Dr. Malloy, excuse me, because we are live, I'm getting noticed that people aren't hearing, and this is important discussion. So please remember to turn your mics on.
I, I don't, I don't agree with the idea of just advertising for people interested. I, I think we're under a timeframe. I, I think the idea we discussed here a little bit, i- it just makes logical sense that the voters have already spoken in an election and they gave uh, the most votes to an individual, when you combine a Democrat, Republican. And why it's logical and why you can run on both tickets is that school boards are to be apolitical. They're, they're not to be involved in politics, although we very much are here. Uh, I, I really think this way, it's a fair and logical way to appoint somebody for four months who, who has a very strong chance of winning the election, being the top vote getter with five candidates on the ballot. And uh, I, I don't know Stephanie McGinnis. If you were to walk in this room, I wouldn't know who it was. But I, I just think it's a logical way to have an appointment by this board.
I agree. You know, if you do letters and I, that's a good point that, you know, you get the letters, then you have to, you go through them, you interview the candidates. So you're talking maybe a month, a month and a half, two months that, that you'll have a replacement for, for Mike. This way, we have a replacement. If Stephanie accepts it, uh, then we have a replacement right away at the next meeting.
Don't we have to have that replacement within 30 days? Yes, so we could have the letters and we would have to act quickly on that then. Okay.
Right, okay. Since that motion. Right, okay. Since that motion, and I have a second, let's vote on that and then we'll vote on the other one. Could we have a roll call please?
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would this mean that one of those people could also submit a letter of interest like Stephanie McGinnis, Val Mignon, Tina Johnston? Okay.
Yes. That's correct. Okay. Okay.
Are you going to interview today's?
I think we would have to interview them, talk to them.
You're not going to have a candidate that night, I don't think, because you have to discuss their qualifications, so. I, I understand that it's, it's probably a good way, but I just think that. For us to have a board member sitting for next month's meeting. If, if, uh, Tina or Val, if Tina doesn't want it, Val may want it, or Ms. Johnston may want it. That's what I think it should, it should get personally. The interviews take place in public also? Okay.
So could we, are we, so we're going to vote, we're going to vote right now on the one that Sharon proposed, which was we put out letters of interest.
Correct.
All right, so that's moved. Do we take a roll call on that?
I'm sorry. Should I do both motions before we do public comment? Because. If this one doesn't pass, then it would be the next one. Okay. Okay. Anyone wishing to provide public comment, please come to the microphone.
This is public comment solely on the matter of the proposed. Method of appointing and filling the board vacancy via acceptance of letters of interest and interviews.
So, so the way I understand. The three, uh. Board members that are going to be elected in November. You're nominating them or asking them if they will fill Mr. Baker's seat. Is that the way I understand it? I can't turn it on, would you please?
That, that's what Dr. Malloy proposed, but right now they're having a vote on whether to accept letters of interest from anyone and everyone that might be interested.
So then, so it can be just anybody at large then?
That's what this particular vote is on.
Yes.
Anybody at large. Okay, thank you.
That, that meets the qualifications to be a mem, a, a school board member. There's certain requirements relative to age and, and residence and things of that nature.
And, and this needs to be clarified. It's for a four-month term.
Right, this is only for a four-month term prior to the reorganization in December.
When it comes to the letters of intent, my issue would be because you have a thirty-day time limit is you're talking about mailing in. Reading, getting a contact with people, bringing them in. So there's a lot of logistics that comes behind that. And with, just with the letters intent. As much as I want to say, hey, it'd be nice to have, uh, multiple, a multitude of people. I don't think it's in the best interest of the school district with the time constraints that you have to go. With the actual letters of intent, just due to all the logistics that come with bringing that into the school district, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now could we have a roll call vote please? Mr. Hoover.
No.
Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Dr. Malloy.
No.
Mrs. Bream.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
No.
Mr. Hoff. It's four, four.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, that I'd like to nominate Stephanie McGinnis to fill the four-month term of Mike Baker. Uh, Stephanie was the, uh, received the most or the most total votes in the May primary. And as soon as she would need to accept, and if, if she did not accept, we would go to the next in line, who would be Val Mignon.
Do, do you have confirmation on those numbers, Dr. Malloy?
You could look at blairco.org.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the.
I, I. I did review them.
Okay, I just, I can't find the, um. I found the Democratic one. I can't.
You have to look at the, um, the total Democrat for, and then the total Republican. Stephanie was first on the Republican side and fourth on the Democrat. I think, I think she had one more vote than you.
I, I need the, uh, I need the young buck too.
It's blairco.org. It's under the, uh, the election and voter registration. You want to look at the two thousand twenty-one primary. You want to look at the total Democrat, which would be first since the governor's Democrat. And then the total Republican for Altoona School Board.
I, I found the Democrat. I'm just having a hard time finding the Republican.
It would be down the list, further down, pretty far down.
While we're looking, can I ask the solicitor a question? I'm seeing a sticky wicket here. What's going to happen? So we just had the sending out the letters of interest. That did not pass, it failed. So now if we take a vote the other way and say it's going to be the top vote getter and we have the same vote breakdown, then what do we do as a board?
Somebody from the, who voted, um. Against a motion can reintroduce that motion in, in favor of it. If basically if this person's willing to change their vote and remake that motion, you can take the vote again at the same meeting.
If I'm a betting man, I think this vote's going to be four, four.
Might emphasize the need to get your vacancy sorted out.
In a second, do we do a roll call now?
Well, I think, are you ver, she's verifying that if that's the.
I was thinking putting somebody that's on the ballot.
How about if we say whoever it is, the top vote getter? So if it's Stephanie or if it's Val, either one of them, if they accept, we got it.
I'm going to be perfectly honest. I don't really care which one we choose, but, um, so I'm looking, Stephanie is the top vote getter. Um, however, she fell first on Republican, fifth on Democrat. Um, Val slated on both tickets. Um, so I don't know. I mean, maybe it's something that we, we have them both come in and, and talk to them. I don't know.
I, I think it's a more logical thing to just go by the number of votes because, uh. The voters have made the choice and it, it's to be an apolitical office where Democrat, Republican, that's why you can cross file. And, and I'm just saying it as a logical thing, not as, uh. It, it's not bad to get them both in and talk to them, but the, then it, if both get on the board, you know, it might cause some problems.
I, I'm fine with.
I'm just throwing it out as a logical solution to a problem. Yes. And, and if she's, uh, doesn't accept, then go to the second, who would be Val Mignon.
Any other comment? Can we have a roll call vote? Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Dr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mrs. Bream.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes, you were wrong babe.
Who do I, uh?
Okay, motion passes.
And, and I think this was a very fair way of, of choosing a replacement and, uh. I, I think it speaks well for the board that we were eight oh on it. So let's, let's get this resolved.
Okay. I can call her. Yes, yes, I can call her and ask her. Not a problem. Okay. Board president, I'm sorry, not board president, superintendent's report.
A lot of things are happening in the district, in the community, as we get ready for the start of school. We are. Keeping our finger on the pulse of all the situations that are out there and all the issues that were being faced with COVID and, and any other related topics. Quite frankly. The situation's very fluid, but the board, the administration. Is, is trying to stay in front of it to make sure we can, if, if we need to make a quick decision, we'll be able to. And we thank everyone for their patience. And hopefully we're going to be able to move everything forward.
Okay, thank you. And our student representative, Mackenzie Kelly.
Good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes to tell you a bit about myself. I was born and raised in Altoona and my twin brother and I started our AASD experience at Baker Elementary School. I'm currently senior class secretary and up until last year, I never listened or watched a school board meeting. But with all the changes going on due to COVID, I became very interested due to it affecting the students directly. So that is why as senior class secretary, I hope to become the student school board representative. I've been involved in many different clubs and activities throughout the school year. I've been an active member in student council, National Honor Society and Earth Keepers Club. I'm also a varsity athlete for cross-country indoor and outdoor track and field. Outside of school, I volunteer throughout our community and have a part-time job at Thompson's Pharmacy as a pharmacy technician. And with the start of school coming around, there are a lot of upcoming events in our school. Official fall sports started today. And excitingly, we added a female girls golf team to the high school sports. Um, our first high school football game is going to be Holliesburg versus Altoona. It will be August twenty-seventh. And with that, football season ticket sales are underway. Seniors and passes and tickets can be purchased at the Altoona Athletic Office. Meet the teacher night for junior high students is going to be Monday, August twenty-third. And for high school students, it's going to be Tuesday, August twenty-fourth. Freshman orientation and new student orientation for the high school is going to be August twenty-third. For grades one through twelve, their first day of school will be August twenty-fifth. Student homeroom listings and schedules are posted on Skyward. And clear backpacks are now for sale in the junior and senior high main offices for twelve dollars. So I wish all the students the best of luck as we enter this new school year.
Thank you and thank you for serving on the board.
Welcome aboard.
Sorry, I have a question in relation to something that Mackenzie said. Somebody had asked me if they were selling the sports passes again this year. For, for not just seniors, they're selling the sport passes. Okay, not season. It would be like an all-sports pass. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify before I answered. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone from the employee union? Middle management?
Mrs. Bream, if I could just remind, um, our parents that are out there, um, any parents that have received notification. That you are still deficient on any kind of school vaccination, required school vaccinations. Those notifications have been sent out. Would just like to encourage parents, um, if they've not yet done so. Contact your school office for any information that you may have in regards to required Pennsylvania school vaccinations. Currently, we have over four hundred students that still are deficient in some of those required vaccines. So if you have any questions, please contact my office or your building office. We'll also put information out on our social media and webpage tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, solicitor.
Well, I, I covered a lot already. I just wanted to also make note that, um. For those who are interested beyond just the board members here, who I believe already know, um, on August thirteenth, Pennsylvania Department of Health and Department of Education issued guidance on. COVID protocols within school. And, uh, provide, and that's available on their joint websites. If you Google it, you can find that information and it provides, um, guidance on. What their recommendations are, uh, for both, uh, masking, but also things like the way in which meals are served. Transportation, sports, as well as, uh, quarantine and contact tracing. And also the Altoona, your own district's, uh, health and safety plan is available on the website. So those will be the two main resources for people going forward to start school until further notice with, with regard to what expectations for what's going to be happening.
Anything else?